Adrienne N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of City Council to be held Monday, December 4th at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for December 4th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session as follows. Mayor Pro Tem Wethel.
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Wethel, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite all those who are able to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to proclamations. We have eradication of generational poverty day.
And Sarah Cabell, I believe we have you here to accept this proclamation. And feel free to speak to the proclamation if you'd like before I read it.
Yes, I just wanted to take the minute to thank all of you for doing this proclamation. It's for people like you that allow us to work in our mission and to help us continue to raise awareness to better serve our residents.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. Let's read. Whereas the Fountain of Youth Program was founded seven years ago and has planted its roots in the downtown community of Dubuque, and whereas the Fountain of Youth Program aims to change the mindsets and remove barriers that contribute to generational poverty, and whereas it is the goal of the Fountain of Youth Program to eradicate generational and situational poverty from our community, and whereas the greatest impact can be made through the joint efforts of community organizations, government, and the residents of the community. Now therefore, I, Katie A. Wethel, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 7th Day of December 2023 as a eradication of generational poverty day. You can come on up. Thanks for being here, Sarah. Good to see you. Take care.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Do we have anyone in chambers who would like to hold any of the consent items for separate discussion? Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
And any written input?
No written input.
Okay. Back to the table.
Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrienne, please call the roll.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye. Motion carries, 7 to 0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have appointment for the Cable Television Commission.
And for the Cable Television Commission, we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2026, and one applicant, Georgina Guero. May we have a motion? Anyone here to speak to it, I'm sorry. Okay.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
I move that Georgina Guero be appointed to the three-year term in the Cable Television Commission.
We have a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel. Aye. Motion carried, 7-0. Georgina Guero has been appointed to the three-year term of the Cable Television Commission through July 1st, 2026.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Our public hearing tonight is rezoning 110 East 30th Street, 114 East 30th Street, and 2987 Jackson Street.
Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which this to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Wally.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Wethel and other City Council members. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Director. Tonight before you is a public hearing with regards to the Copper Kettle property owned by Chris Staver. He's looking at deconstructing two single-family homes located directly behind the property on 30th Street and White Street in order to provide accommodations for an off-street parking lot, in order to provide some additional parking for his restaurant business. Currently, the Copper Kettle does not have off-street parking associated with it, so when residents, or excuse me, when customers attend and employees are currently parking on the street. Some of the impacts to the existing parking, as you well know, you'll have an update with the H&amp;W building, has caused some strain on street parking in the area. So Mr. Staver is proposing to provide his own off-street parking. At the public hearing, there was a couple of property owners who spoke in opposition to the request. Katie Dieterman and Emily Dieterman both spoke with regards to Emily's property located at 2977 White Street. She has a single-family home there. With regards to on-street parking on White Street, there's discussion about the high-speed traffic flowing on White Street. White Street is as wide as some of the adjoining streets in the neighborhood. Lot of conversation evolved around traffic safety. Will the parking lot increase traffic in the neighborhood with regards to that? And then also some conversations with regards to lighting and the site plan associated with the parking. Another property owner in the immediate area spoke at the meeting, Mike Munch, who is involved with Cavivium Urban Farmstead, spoke in favor of the request noting that the expansion or the placing of the parking lot would probably help alleviate some of the on-street parking situations that are located in the neighborhood, and the fact that he would love to have an on-street parking lot for his own business, which he does, he just needs a little bit more, is what he says. So, the staff detailed the staff report noting the location of all the properties located in the neighborhood. We also discussed that the property is currently Zoned C1, the Copper Kettle and an indoor restaurant is illegal non-conforming use at the location. So, in regards to rezoning, this request, they're looking at rezoning the Copper Kettle property and those two homes to C2 Neighborhood Commercial, which will allow an indoor restaurant to be a permitted use. As part of the requirements for the rezoning, we actually had the engineering department and the development review team look at a conceptual layout plan for the proposed parking lot to address any concerns about access and where that will be coming from. Based on the preliminary review, MAXUS will be looking at coming off of White Street with a one-way flow through the parking lot and exit out on the 30th Street in order to help just control some of the traffic flow at that intersection. We discussed lighting. Lighting's not required, but if the property owner does choose to place lighting of the parking lot, that'd be required to have 72-degree cutoff luminaires, and we control that how much lighting is impacted at the intersection or at the property line for the associated property. The zoning advisory commission had a discussion, and they felt the property met the requirements of the rezoning, especially since they're trying to alleviate on-street parking, which seems to be the big concern in the neighborhood. So by a vote of 5 to 0, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the City Council approve the request, and a supermajority vote is needed for City Council approval for the request. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Chris Staver to rezone property located at 110 East 30th Street, 114 East 30th Street, and 2987 Jackson Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial and R2A Alternative 2 Family Residential to C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center and zoning advisory commission recommending approval. Is there anyone in chambers to address us on this item? Do we have anyone virtually?
Yeah.
And any written?
No written input.
Back to the table, then.
Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Jones.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the zoning advisory commission for having a special meeting to move this along. I hope it's not too little, too late. But I do appreciate the dilemma that Copper Kettle and all the businesses surrounding the 30th and Elm area, 30th and Jackson area are in, and I think this is a giant step to improve that business and to improve that neighborhood and improve safety around the neighborhood, and I hope the council supports it.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. As a frequent customer, I've had to park, it's a popular place for good reason, and I've had to park several blocks away, and I can just tell, just driving around there with all the customers and the residents, that it is, you know, it does get congested. So I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad we have this recommendation by our commission, and I hope that we pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Well, I would echo that this is definitely a popular restaurant, and I agree that these lots will alleviate some parking in those residential spaces. I also think it's an appropriate zoning for this neighborhood. This is a zoning that it makes sure that it's not going to adversely affect surrounding residences. There are several uses in that zoning, but the site is so small that it would require extra steps to accommodate those kind of uses. So I think it's a great benefit to the neighbors to have such a great restaurant nearby, and I hope that we can all support this change. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rousseau. Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, just echoing everyone else's lovely words, but definitely something that is needed in the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Yes, Ms. Brand.
Yeah, and I agree that this is a great neighborhood enhancement, and thank you very much for your creativity and looking forward to do this expansion as a restaurant owner. I can certainly totally understand what it's like to have off-street parking, so, and I really, what I also like about it is you're enhancing an opportunity for a neighborhood to gather, you know, for friends and families to gather within that area. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add other than to say that I do plan to support this. I think it's a very good idea and appropriate as stated by other council members.
Wonderful. Well, I think it's fair to say the Copper Kettle is a destination, not just a gathering space. People from outside of Dubuque and Dubuque County go there because it's a great place and space to gather, not to mention your food's fantastic, so. Thank you, Mr. Staver. We have a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank to waive three readings. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel. Aye. Motion carried, 7-0.
Ms. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Jones.
Move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye. Motion carried, 7-0.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the Mayor Pro Tem asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Is there anyone in chambers who would like to provide public input? Please, if you would, just come, the mic is adjustable, maybe up rather than down for you, sir, but if you'd just state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Jordan Pape. I'm a representative of Tucker Freight Lines, based here in Dubuque, which is at 1080 East 12th Street. So at Tucker Freight Lines, I serve as the Chief Sustainability Officer and Vice President of Assets. We've been based in downtown Dubuque since 1978, and we currently provide for hire trucking services. We run about 300 power units within the fleet, and we serve a variety of customers from small, local shippers to, you know, the John Deeres of the community. I guess I had to change my tune coming up to the podium a little bit here, so it's my understanding that the proposed ordinance potentially restricting truck traffic along Central and White Avenue has undergone some changes. And so with those changes, we are actually in support of that new ordinance being adopted so long as subsection F is included, and we would encourage the City Council to adopt that new ordinance. Going forward, we would also like to just make it known that we want to be a more active role and participant in trying to design some of these solutions for the future as traffic flows are considered. As a sizable fleet, we feel that we can provide valuable information regarding public safety, environmental sustainability, and general efficiency of traffic moves throughout the area. So, you know, we very much look forward to collaborating with the city, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and, you know, potential engineering firms who might be involved in coordinating those studies in the future. So, short, sweet, and to the point, I guess, I appreciate, Mr. Van Milligan, your accommodation there. I think that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Would anyone else like to provide any public input? Yes, sir.
Matt Spawn, I'm here as a representative of Dubuque Stamping and Manufacturing. We've been on the corner of 32nd and Jackson for 75 years. Certainly, we aren't a trucking firm, but throughout this process, I guess, one thing that I'd kind of like to echo that was just said is, we would like to be actively involved in these things and have communication with this, some of which we feel may have been lost in some of this process up until the recent period. We certainly appreciate the accommodations that are being made. They're very important, not just for our business, but for all of the businesses on that end of town. But along with that comes a greater question of community, recruiting people to Dubuque, getting people to commute to Dubuque. And one concern that we still have is how much truck traffic will be hitting intersections such as the arterial and 20 and those areas, as it appears some of that information remains unknown. So that is a concern that we have as a business that tries to recruit people out to the north end and try and draw people in from other areas. We still have that concern remaining, but we certainly do appreciate the accommodations that have been made for the local businesses and our local truck traffic. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else, please? Yes.
My name's Joe Kirk, Distribution Manager with Prairie Farms Dairy on the north end. Kind of like what the two gentlemen earlier said, we appreciate the accommodations, but I think the one thing that we would, as a group, we're talking, we'd like to be involved in some of the, you know, not decision-making, but kind of giving some facts. Any day on the average, I have 130 trucks, so 65 trucks going in and out of Dubuque. Take, you know, so that's 130 trucks that would be on Dodge Street and the Northwest Arterial. From Julien Dubuque Bridge to the north end of the Northwest Arterial, there's 16 stoplights, okay? A semi, especially if it's not a man, or if it's a manual transmission, it takes a while to get through stoplights. Therefore, it would congest Dodge Street. So that's one thing that we'd like to make sure that people understand, that semi-trucks do not move like cars, okay? So and the amount that it takes for semi to stop is three to four times, five times the distance if someone were to cut off the semis. So I alone have 130 vehicles that would have been directed on Dodge Street and Northwest Arterial, and I don't know what percentage I would make up of all the trucks that would have got redirected, but I think we'd need to do a study on that. But we do appreciate the accommodations, but it's a large number of trucks that would have got redirected. So again, I do appreciate the accommodations.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello. Mike Igoe, Clower Manufacturing Company, 1185 Roosevelt Street. Just to kind of echo what you've heard here already, so our company represents 5,000-plus semi-truck trips into and out of the city. Most of that is going to our plant off of Kerper, which really doesn't have anything to do with this, but some of it does go to our facility on 26th Street in Washington. So if we have access to that facility that's limited, if we have to reroute and go all the way around the city to get there and come back, that's adding burden to our business. It makes that facility less valuable to us, and consequently, you know, we may not want to stay there. So I'm glad that things, I'm glad the city manager is proposing things as he is, so very much appreciative of that. And I, had it not gone that way, I would have raised a lot of concern over what's going to happen with Dodge Street, because I, you know, being familiar with folks close to us and knowing how many trucks are going to get pushed down that corridor, I'd like to see that get addressed at some point in time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Igoe. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Public comment? Okay. Do we have anyone virtually? And written input?
No written input.
Okay, thank you.
We will move on to action items. Action item number one is update 3000 Jackson Street H&amp;W Building.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Jones.
I will receive and file the report. Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. So you have some written information on the agenda from the Housing Community Development Director Alexis Steger, and tonight with us is the Assistant Housing Community Development Director Michael Belmont, who will give you a verbal update. And then we've also been told that the owner of the property, Steve Emerson, was going to join us virtually. I don't know if that's happened or not, so.
I am here, Mike.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. So.
Mike Belmont, Assistant Housing Director. I do wish I had more to update. Last Thursday, I talked to the structural engineer, and he gave me a summary of what it is that they are designing, what steps that they are looking to take to stabilize the building.
Mike, may I stop you for just a moment? Mr. Emerson, I think we need to put you on mute if we might. Okay.
It's one of the other callers.
Okay.
They're working on it.
Okay.
Oh, that may have been the mayor. I apologize, everybody.
No problem, Mayor Kavanaugh. Sorry, Mike, please go ahead.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
That was a little distracting in the background. So I talked to the structural engineer on Thursday, and he gave me an update on what it is that they're looking to do and where they're at. We did expect, we did hear last council meeting that we would have something before Thanksgiving, and that, of course, did not happen. I talked to the structural engineer, and he said that they should have something within a couple of weeks. We're not real happy with that, but we are waiting for them to provide us with a design of a few areas of the building that we can, along with our consulting engineers, that we can review, so that we can have some level of confidence that the stabilization of the building is done in a way that protects the public. I did today receive, I asked the engineer for something in writing, because we hadn't gotten that at that point. I did receive an email from him this afternoon, and I'll go ahead and read that to you. McClure Engineering has been engaged by 3000 Jackson LLC to provide engineering services for the stabilization and restoration of the structure at the same address. We have directed the recent selective demolition to remove unstable portions of the exterior facade, and we have directed the installation of the temporary supports at the large opening on the west facade where the header has deflected vertically. We understand that this bracing is currently resting on a horizontal wood plate, which could allow some crushing. This plate will be removed so that, soon, so that the added supports inside and out will bear directly on masonry. That was brought to the engineer's attention by me. The temporary supports that they had put in, on the bottom of them, they were bearing on wood, and one of the temporary supports had actually come out of the opening. And so if we're going to rely on those supports for bearing of something that's missing, they ought to stay in place and be secure. And we wanted to make sure that the design of that support was actually directed by the engineer and not necessarily by the contractor that had been on site, that there was some professional oversight of the shoring. Going on, McClure Engineering is currently working on developing a system to provide lateral support for the southwest corner of 3000 Jackson Street. We are currently designing some compression bracing for the existing masonry sheer wall. This is the, it says highlighted in the snip below, you don't have that image, but this is the backside of the towers that run parallel with Jackson, so it's the backside of that wall. There is some significant cracking in that wall, and they're designing a system to compress that wall and stabilize it. I'll go on to read here. Further, we are designing diagonal bracing for the frame one bay to the east of that wall to further stabilize this wing and prevent some twisting that was observed. This bracing will provide a longer-term stabilization to the observed distress in this area of the structure. That is the update that I have. for him to be present at this meeting, to, uh, be available to answer some of the questions that you might have. At that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Emerson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, to add to what, um, Michael has stated, it, it has been a frustrating go on timing. The, the struggles I've had with the engineers is that they are doing detailed analysis of the entire building, trying to provide, well, they, they have provided, um, immediate needs to the demolition contractor and worked hand-in-hand with him to make sure that what was necessary to be stabilized was stabilized. Uh, the walls that were, um, at risk of falling, they were demolished. But, in light of, or since Davenport is, we're all, same, same reflection you guys are having, I'm sure, the engineers are being extremely conscious, um, looking at the entire building. They're providing details, um, and tension, uh, cable tension fixes that we had originally planned on doing, that would be fairly immediate. Um, and then as well as that, some rigid frame structure that's gonna be more permanent that will stabilize the building, uh, permanent nature within those column bays. I talked to Patrick today, and he said I'll have details on Friday. I've talked to, uh, Zinzer and Bush Construction, and they know those are coming, and they're, they're poised to get back and do it right away. The, um, details that they're providing are not just responding to what your report had stated, but it's going much deeper into the building and trying to make sure that everything's good. Our plan is to submit for a dual-track Lytec grant April 10th. That's, uh, 43 units out of 9% Lytec, the balance being about 70 units at a 4%. Um, I am talking to two different Lytec developers that would partner with me on that. We've got all of our designs done, um, and so that's kind of the next potential step. Uh, the only thing that was left unresolved with the demolition, or when the crane was on-site, was wrapping or taking off the two tower, um, hats or lids or whatever. Um, they wanted to get the structural details and some of the bracing in place before they did that, so we may very well, since it's this late in the season, or the, or the winter, I guess, getting there, um, just wrap those to keep shingles and all that from falling off. And that's been an ongoing problem, because when a slate shingle from that high falls, it has a tendency to fly pretty far, and it, and it's heavy. So, are there specific questions on a timeline? If we get details this, uh, Friday, we should be able to have, um, the contractors mobilized again in the next week or two. These cable ties, which are the immediate ties, which resolve pretty much everything that was in your structural report, will go on immediately, so they should be done, I would say, by the end of the year. But the ongoing rigid framework will probably go on for another four to six weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson. I think what we'll do is open it up for council questions at this time. Would anyone like to, um, have a question, either for Mr. Belmont or Mr. Emerson? Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much, and, um, thank you for being here, Mr. Emerson. And, um, so, we've been, uh, looking at this situation, and we got an email today that reminds us of the gravity of the situation, especially in the neighborhood. And it's not just, uh, the copper kettle that is affected by this. There are other businesses, and of course, all the residences, uh, residents of the, of the area. So, we got a, a message, uh, today from a local businessman, and he's just very frustrated. You know, the, these local businesses really rely on people going by and seeing that, hey, you wanna buy this, uh, item locally from somebody who's there every day in your neighborhood? Well, they have to be seen, and when you can't drive by their place, then they're, they're losing money. And so, we, we got a reminder about that, the, uh, the situation. Uh, and so, it's really important, one of the things he asks in this, um, email is, who is gonna ask the tough questions? And a couple of weeks ago, we talked about this, and it's, uh, it's an emotionally, uh, powerful situation, and, uh, there's a lot of frustration, as I hear, you're frustrated, Mr. Emerson, with the whole situation. Uh, but, uh, as the city attorney and the city manager mentioned, we're doing everything the city can do legally to get things moving and make sure that they're done in the correct way. So, um, so, you know, I'm not gonna ask all the tough questions, uh, because I think you know what those are. Um, and when you say the next thing up, next up is four months away, it's just kind of discouraging, uh, to the neighborhood. And I know that it's a big job, and you've known that for a long time, that it's a big job. We really need to, uh, put expediency at the top. We wanna be, absolutely, uh, we wanna be sure we get it right, and I know you've invested a lot of money, and you wanna get it right. Uh, but I'm hoping that you can say something to the neighbors, the businesses, the residents, to let them know that you're doing your utmost to get this done in the best way and the fastest way possible. Could you do that, Mr. Emerson?
Absolutely. I am, I've pursued this project from the start, and I think we've gone three different designs trying to get a, figure out a way to resolve it. I do have millions of dollars into it, as you know. Um, and this is probably, well, this is the final step. If, uh, we can't resolve this April 10th, um, there's no other choice but to take the building down. That's, um, there's no other options for it. So, we have been pushing and diligently trying to do this. Um, if we can get through the stabilization and get the streets back open, I think that would be our, our next step, uh, which could be, I'd say, four weeks. Uh, after that, though, the construction for the overall building would be late summer, um, and it would be a couple-year project for construction.
Thank you very much. And if you wouldn't mind, uh, would you concur with everything that, uh, you know, how would you, as, as in the housing department, how would you characterize, uh, the, the, the speed and the quality of work that's being done? Would you say that it's matching expectations here in the city? Would you say it's the best of, of all worlds, or could you offer suggestions to help as a, as our housing department?
So, one of the things that I would say is that, um, as you can imagine, uh, the, uh, the building there is very complicated. Um, it's an old, large brick building that has significant deterioration over time. So, uh, any type of, uh, corrective action or stabilization does require, uh, some challenging analysis and, um, time to figure out how to make it, uh, work and work for the longer term. Do I wish it was quicker? Yes, of course. The, um... The areas that have been addressed are areas that were in the report, in, in the original report from WHKS. There were 10 areas of concern. Uh, five of those areas are on Jackson Street and 30th Street. Uh, the focus, uh, from Mr. Emerson has been on those street-facing sides to, uh, to try to, um, uh, get to a level of confidence that the, uh, that there's a public safety. Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of. Uh, and very briefly, uh, I just wanna, if you could say, I'd like you to verify independently. I know you said you wish it could be quicker. My opinion, my question is, do you think it can be quicker? And if so, how could it be done quicker? You know, uh, again, I'm fighting the, this usual emotional intensity that I get, thinking I am living down there, or I have a business down there, and we're saying the best thing we can do is four months, and then we might have an answer for you. Is there anything we could suggest that would make this process quicker and better? That's my, that's my question.
So, I just, I just wanna quick, uh, address some of that. When we look at complexity, um, it does take a long time, but there are things that can move faster, um, unfortunately, out of the control of the city and sometimes the owner. So, you can only get an engineering firm to work as fast as they have capacity, and you can only search for those firms for so many that actually have the capacity to build something that's complicated. So, would we have liked McClure to move faster? Yes. Um, is it, it, were they capable of it? We don't see their portfolio of work. We don't know what other work it is, and yes, they are one of the qualified firms that can do this, and it's not that many of them. So, a little bit of patience with the two weeks, we see as reasonable. Um, we did wanna see it before Thanksgiving, we were expecting it, but we see it as reasonable that an engineering firm of their caliber may have other very pressing situations like this one that could come first.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate everybody's effort, uh, yours included, Mr. Emerson, to, that you're doing, I appreciate the fact that you're doing the best you can in this situation. Thank, thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem.
One thing I'd, I'd like to respond to, you had, you had asked about the four-month decision, if that could be done quicker. That is a rigid, April 10th is a rigid deadline with the state funding that we're chasing, so that absolutely cannot be done quicker. We have had offline conversations with the director of those programs, um, and, uh, the developers that seek those funds, so, but that April 10th is a, a rigid deadline that we can't, um, get out of, of, ahead of.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson.
Ms. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I, I do appreciate what you're up against, Mr. Emerson, and I understand the, the complexities of it. Understand, though, that we've got citizens that, uh, own homes, people that own businesses that are trying pretty hard, and they want their neighborhood back. They don't want their streets blocked anymore. They wanna be able to get to their homes, they wanna be able to get to their businesses. And I, for one, am very frustrated with it. Not so much about the timeline now, about the last two years where nothing happened. Um, it's time for things to happen at the fastest rate that they can without compromising safety. It is time to get this project done, it's time to get the barricades out of the street. And if the building has to come down, the building has to come down, but this has to move. People are at the end of their rope. We've got a guy that we just approved reselling for, that's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to add some parking so he can keep his business open, and he's hanging on by a thread. People aren't coming, because your building has his street blocked. It's time to fix it as fast as you can. Thank you for being with us tonight, and I, I apologize for my tone, but that's the tone of the neighborhood. It's time. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Emerson. I'm glad that you were able to make this work, um, but definitely, the neighborhood is tired and frustrated, and we understand you got a big problem. Um, it's not gonna be one that's gonna be solved overnight. It's just frustrating beyond measure for the fact that we have to live with this building. And we don't want anything to happen. We don't want an incident like Davenport. Cause I just wanna be clear that if something were to happen, you are responsible, the city is not responsible. We've done everything we can to make sure you do it safely, and I'm glad that you've found a qualifying engineering firm, so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the next report and the next step, and I know you wanna save your building, so, thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh? Mayor Kavanaugh?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, and, uh, my apologies for the earlier noises to distract everyone. Um, you heard the transition into, uh, leaving the car, so my apologies on that. Um, you know, Mr. Emerson, again, I thank you very much for, for being here. I wanna echo my council colleagues in saying that we really appreciate the fact that you're being responsive in this way, um, in this meeting. But I also, I, I need to echo especially what, uh, Mr. Jones said, but what others have said as well, that, uh, that the patience of the community is, is really running out here. And one of the reasons that we, as a council, have asked for these updates here, uh, the last two weeks, is because we are hearing frequently, almost weekly and sometimes daily, about your building and the challenges that it's bringing to that area of town. And when a street is closed, the main thoroughfare for that long, um, we need to keep moving forward and getting it done. Uh, what I heard you say here is that we've got about four weeks that we can expect to have that road open again, so we'd really appreciate seeing that on that timeline. Understandable that this could take a little longer for the larger construction, but getting this street open safely and as quickly as possible is definitely the most important thing right now. So, thank you for your work on that. Um, we are gonna hold you to it, and we hope that we can see some movement pretty quickly here in the weeks ahead. But thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I just wanna reiterate, uh, a couple of things that we covered at our last meeting. Uh, Mr. Emerson, uh, we had, and I had personally reached out to Dwayne Hagerty at Heritage Works, um, just regarding, uh, any historic recommendations, um, that, uh, would be made by their organization. And, um, as it relates to historic tax credits, uh, it was noted by Mr. Hagerty that the two turrets in, specifically, are what really allow for the retainment of historical integrity of the building, and in order to access state historic preservation office and National Park Service monies, that those are two items, and I'm just sharing that to ensure that everyone, um, has the same information to retain those structures if there would be hope to get any additional funding in that way. I appreciate you being here, Mr. Emerson, because I am certain that, uh, the critique that you are hearing tonight is, is somewhat difficult to hear professionally, but I, I hope that you know we're grateful for your presence. We are planning to revisit this topic at every meeting, uh, I think, in the foreseeable future, until we have resolution, and if that means that we have an update every meeting until April 10th, I think this council is prepared for that. Thank you. We then have a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. Adrian, will you call the roll, please? Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero. Action item number two is Housing Commission Research and Recommendation. Ms. Mayor Protem. Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber. A motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Any council questions or discussions? Yes, Mike.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing Community Development Director Alexis Stager is providing information regarding the Housing Commission responsibilities. In response to an audit finding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is recommending City Council adopt the updates to the Housing Commission ordinance to come in compliance with the federal regulations and to eliminate redundancies in the ordinance. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Now, I think we can ask for any comments at council. Yes, Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. Um, I think, I think this change meets the request from HUD, and it seems to be in alignment with what the other similar-sized Iowa communities are doing. Um, and if this will require some of our commissioners to have to step down, I would thank them for their service to the commission and to their renters. Thanks.
Anyone else comment? Mayor Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. Um, I just wanted to, to point out that I, you know, this is a bit of a surprising, uh, finding, I think, to, to learn that this was a requirement of HUD. I, I know that our, uh, Housing Commission or Housing and Community Development Department was unaware that that was the case, um, based on previous experience, and, uh, yet, in some ways, it seems a little counterintuitive, but that's not for, for us to, to say. I mean, I think we try to have as much diversity on our commissions as possible, and that includes diversity of professional experience, and, um, while I can understand where this is coming from, um, I, and it just seemed a little strange at first, but all that said, I'm very happy with the compromise and the, um, creativity here that has been put together by the, the Housing Commission, or, uh, the Housing and Community Development Department, to make sure that this is done correctly. So, thank you very much to Alexis and the whole team there in putting this together. I think this is a good fix, and I'm looking forward to voting for it.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. We have a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Adrian, please call the roll. Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero. Ms. Mayor Protem. Ms. Rousell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber. Motion by Rousell and second by Farber. Adrian, please call the roll. Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation have recently been working to secure one-time Iowa Department of Health and Human Services funding for childcare worker wage enhancements, and would acquire a 50% private employer and a 50% state match. Wage enhancement is key to attracting and retaining childcare providers, the lack of which is driving the area's childcare shortage. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, City of Dubuque, DRA, and Dubuque County have offered tuition supports for relevant childcare professional certifications, support for childcare during classes for those students, and even up to a year of childcare upon employment after receiving their certificate. Despite these programs to increase childcare workforce in the last five years, we've seen approximately a 23% decrease in the number of early childcare professionals in Dubuque. Jill Connors and the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation advises the state's aforementioned funding is now being offered at a two-to-one rate to the match raised in the community as opposed to the initial one-to-one match. Greater Dubuque Development and Dubuque Initiatives are currently requesting those local match dollars from local employers. The goal is to secure a total of at least $280,000 in local match for this effort to increase childcare workforce capacity through training, wage enhancement, retention programs, and other supports. This would leverage $560,000 of state funding. These benefits will be available to all Dubuque County licensed childcare centers that have a childcare assistance agreement with the state of Iowa. Employers who pledge to contribute to the efforts before December 31, 2023 will be guaranteed childcare slots, one slot per every $5,000 contributed, for its employees at the soon-to-be operational childcare facility at 7900 Chauvinelle Road. In addition, employees of contributing employers would also have preference for additional vacant slots at the facility. Greater Dubuque Development and Dubuque Initiatives have submitted a request to the city for a contribution of $25,000 towards this local match. There is a sufficient balance in the city's fiscal year 2023 general fund savings to cover this cost. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Would any one of my colleagues like to discuss or make comment? Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. Obviously, this is very important to the entire community. It's been one of our top high priorities here in the council, and I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to participate in this, the citizens of Dubuque $25,000 into this effort. I'm glad we were reaching out and for other partners, you know, it's not the citizens of Dubuque just themselves, but the businesses are helping and Greater Dubuque Development Corporation heading the way, and we're leveraging this money in a very good way. So I'm excited about this. We're really attacking this problem of lack of childcare, and I'm all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Ms. Farber.
Yes, thank you, and I also want to give a shout out to DI and the city and the fact that on Chauvinelle Road, we will have a large center for childcare and that we are collaborating with the Wai and the school district itself to create opportunities for childcare, and this, I think, will enhance and give opportunity for the providers of this, whether they work there or on their own in their own facilities. And as we talked about, workforce is extremely important in the expansion and the support of their families, and this is just a great step and something we have been working on for a couple of years now, so I'm very pleased to see this moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Yes, Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. I think this is just a good reminder that the city of Dubuque not only is a provider of services to our residents, but is also an employer, and that we are very concerned about our own employees and their quality of life, and being able to come to work knowing their children have a safe and quality place to go during the day is really important. So I'm glad that we can be an example as an employer that cares about the employees and their needs. Thanks.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yeah, this is just some, again, really great creativity that came from Dubuque Initiatives and all the folks on that board and all the partners going into this work on childcare in the community. You know, I think the thing to make sure we point out is that this is not just about the childcare center that Dubuque Initiatives is helping to begin out at the industrial park, but it is really about childcare overall throughout the city. There will be opportunities for childcare providers to be able to be a part of this, and I do think that it's a very good use of city dollars to help to fund this and help move it forward. So thank you very much to everyone who's involved, and I'm looking forward to voting yes for it.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I think this also recognizes that those who care for our greatest treasure, our children, deserve a living wage, and that as a community, we're willing to step forward and collaborate and make that happen. So, thank you to all involved. We have a motion by Resnick and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero.
Action item number five is Central Avenue, White Street Truck Route: Amend Commercial Motor Vehicles Ordinance.
Ms. Mayor Protam.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we table this discussion until the 18th of December.
Second by Sprank.
We have a motion to table by Farber and a second by Sprank. I just, in entertaining that motion, would like to allow you to provide, if you would, or I may provide, may I provide a reason for considering table of the motion?
So, once there's a motion to table and a second, it's not debatable?
Got it.
So, there should be a vote at this point?
Okay, all right.
Mayor Protam, could I point out information? Could someone give information, just as she spoke? I mean, we don't have to discuss things, but can some person just give information about perhaps the motion and why that motion might possibly be offered, or some factual information about why, without discussion?
I think there could be a brief, here's why I choose the 18th. If it's limited to that, I don't think there's an issue there.
That would be a good question, why the 18th?
I would be happy to provide that, if that's okay, Ms. Farber.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, all right, great. So, in order to entertain the motion and table and desire to table the item until December 18th, I think although our memo and our movement and discussion of the last 24 hours has been very effective and productive, I appreciate the staff's work and all that they have done, I believe it would be helpful for myself and my constituents to be able to have time to not only discuss how the planned transition would affect individual business owners, how it would affect those who live and work on Central, but also just for them to reach out to me and allow them the opportunity to share their thoughts. We have a motion by Farber and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero.
Six.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion carried six to one. Action item number six is Work Session Request: Officer-Involved Shooting Procedures.
Ms. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and schedule the requested work session for February 19th at 5:30 PM.
Second by Rousell.
We have a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Does that date work for everyone? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it does.
Since I can't see your head nod. Is that okay with you, sir?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I said, yes, it does. Maybe I don't know how to work the news button anymore.
No problem, thank you. We have a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero.
We'll move on to council member reports. Any council reports that would like to be shared this evening?
Ms. Mayor Protam.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I've got kind of a good one. You know, Mr. Resnick and I serve on the Solid Waste Agency Board, and there's been quite a bit of conversation this year about the city of Dubuque's food waste collection program and that it was perhaps in some distress due to some changing interpretation of DNR regulations. I want you to know that the engineering firm that we hired to evaluate the situation is confident that for minimal costs and its agency costs and its city of Dubuque costs, we're going to be able to not only maintain but also grow that program. It won't be a huge composting program, but it'll be much larger than it is. We believe we're currently at about 20% of the potential capacity that we could be at, and I think that's exciting news, and I think, and given the go-ahead to continue to move forward, we don't expect any interruption in the crib-side service.
Wonderful.
So, happy about that. Good work on behalf of David and the public work staff, which is always brilliant when they work on big problems. This was a big problem and a big surprise, and a fairly quick turnaround and solution.
Thank you for your commitment as well, Mr. Jones. I know you've spent a great deal of years dealing with these topics and have your own very vast knowledge, so thank you for your service. Anyone else, council member reports? Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention to the citizens that one week ago, we had a legislative dinner and so many of our partners, federal, state, county, and city, and school partners got together, and there was a frank discussion of different issues because we are facing tough issues. And so, and there are differences of opinion, but I just want to reiterate what the mayor said and so many others said that night, and that we really appreciate the partnership that we have with all of those people present, and that we really showed that each one of us would like to find answers to these tough problems. And the first thing you have to do is acknowledge that they're problems, and then say, you know what, let's talk about it and do the best we can to solve them. So I just really appreciate everybody who got up and talked and, you know, before and after the speeches, and so I think that was very valuable. I just wanted to let the citizens know, we are in a face-to-face discussion with so many of our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Yes, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. As some folks say, there's nothing to do in this town, and I think I try to prove them wrong some.
We have a motion to table by Farber and a second by Sprank. I just, in entertaining that motion, would like to allow you to provide, if you would, or I may provide, yeah, provide a reason for considering table of the motion.
So, once there's a motion to table and a second, it's not debatable.
Got it.
So, there should be a vote at this point.
Okay. All right.
Mayor Protem, could I point out information? Could someone give information just as she spoke? I mean, we don't have to discuss things, but can some person just give information about perhaps the motion and why that motion might possibly be offered, or some factual information about why without discussion?
I think there could be a brief, here's why I choose the 18th. If it's limited to that, I don't think there's an issue there.
That would be a good question, why the 18th?
I would be happy to provide that, if that's okay, Ms. Farber.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Great. So, in order to entertain the motion and table and desire to table the item until December 18th, I think although our memo and our movement and discussion of the last 24 hours has been very effective and productive, I appreciate the staff's work and all that they have done. I believe it would be helpful for myself and my constituents to be able to have time to not only discuss how the planned transition would affect individual business owners, how it would affect those who live and work on Central, but also just for them to reach out to me and allow them the opportunity to share their thoughts. We have a motion by Farber and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
No.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell. Aye.
Jones.
No.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell. Aye.
Jones.
No.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
No.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell. Aye.
Jones.
No.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell. Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero. Action item number six is work session request, officer-involved shooting procedures.
Ms. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and schedule the requested work session for February 19 at 5:30 PM.
Second by Rousell.
We have a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Does that date work for everyone? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it does.
Since I can't see your head nod. Is that okay with you, sir?
Oh, yes, sorry, but I said, yes, it does. Maybe I don't know how to work the news button anymore.
No problem. Thank you. We have a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero. We'll move on to council member reports. Any council reports that would like to be shared this evening?
Ms. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I've got kind of a good one. You know, Mr. Resnick and I serve on the Solid Waste Agency Board, and there's been quite a bit of conversation this year about the City of Dubuque's food waste collection program and that it was perhaps in some distress due to some changing interpretation of DNR regulations. I want you to know that the engineering firm that we hired to evaluate the situation is confident that for minimal cost and its agency cost and that City of Dubuque cost, we're going to be able to not only maintain but also grow that program. It won't be a huge comp posting program, but it'll be much larger than it is. We believe we're currently at about 20% of the potential capacity that we could be at, and I think that's exciting news, and I think, given the go-ahead to continue to move forward, we don't expect any interruption in the crib-side service.
Wonderful.
So, happy about that. Good work on behalf of David and the public work staff, which is always brilliant when they work on big problems. This was a big problem and a big surprise and a fairly quick turnaround and solution.
Thank you for your commitment as well, Mr. Jones. I know you've spent a great deal of years dealing with these topics and have your own very vast knowledge, so thank you for your service. Anyone else? Council member reports. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention to the citizens that one week ago, we had a legislative dinner and so many of our partners, federal, state, county, and city and school partners got together, and there was a frank discussion of different issues because we are facing tough issues. And so, and there are differences of opinion, but I just want to reiterate what the mayor said and so many others said that night, and that we really appreciate the partnership that we have with all of those people present, and that we really showed that each one of us would like to find answers to these tough problems. And the first thing you have to do is acknowledge that they're problems and then say, you know what, let's talk about it and do the best we can to solve them. So, I just really appreciate everybody who got up and talked and, you know, before and after the speeches, and so I think that was very valuable. I just want to let citizens know, we are in a face-to-face discussion with so many of our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Yes, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. As some folks say, there's nothing to do in this town, and I think, I try to prove them wrong some days. Friday night, there was a handful of things going on on the central corridor, as well as that led into the millwork district, so there was all kinds of that, all kinds of merriment for the holidays. Key City was doing a big program to help out folks where they wanted to learn how to work, operate a cricket, so that was a fun thing. I got to stop by and learn how to make an ornament, so, but always something going on in the neighborhood, so.
Absolutely. Yes. Mayor Kavanaugh, do you have any comments?
I do. I do. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Rousell, for leading this meeting tonight. You're there because about, from what I can tell by my map, it's not perfect, but about 24 hours ago, I think, I began traveling back from Dubai in the United Arab Emirates after attending a few days of a local climate action summit at the annual, so this is COP28, the annual United Nations Climate Forum that happens on an annual basis throughout the world. This is one of the largest COPs that has been attended, I think, in years. It was, I think they said they expected around 70,000 people, and I'm going to tell you that it definitely felt that way. It was, it was an absolutely packed place where they, we were able to come together with countries from all over the world to be able to discuss the needs of climate action throughout the globe. And I have to tell you, it was a, it was a humbling experience in being there, knowing that, you know, as the City of Dubuque, we were one of 30 cities that were represented in the United States and one of just over 100 cities, I believe, represented throughout the world. And we were invited by Bloomberg Philanthropies and thank them very much for their support to be able to be there and to fund that effort to allow us to be there. I attended with our Sustainability Director Gina Bell, and we had an incredible opportunity to make many contacts with people throughout the world, but primarily, honestly, throughout the United States. There were some very, there were some officials from the Biden Administration there, an ambassador for sub-national diplomacy Nina Hachikian was there, as well as John Podesta, who is working to push forward the Inflation Reduction Act and the funds that are coming from there. We were there with groups like Climate Mayors, the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, the C40 Initiative, a new group called America's All In, and really to stand together to be able to say, this is one of the most important issues of our time, and if we are going to tackle it, then local governments throughout the world need to have a place at the table. And we definitely took that place as we were there this week to be able to discuss ways in which we are, on a daily basis, actually doing things toward climate action. We've got plenty of examples here in Dubuque, and there are many, many examples from across the United States and across the world, and it was, it was great to see this. It was great to have our federal government officials and world officials there to listen to what we had to say. I think it's important that we continue to be a part of this discussion and continue to have forums like this to move real climate action forward, because I think that it's become very clear that we're in a situation where we all need to be working together, and if certain levels of government are struggling to move things forward, then we need to look to the others. And I was very, very proud and honored to be with Gina Bell and representing the City of Dubuque in this effort, and thank you very much for allowing me the time to go and still allowing me the time to be here with you tonight virtually.
What a wonderful way for you to represent our city, Mayor Kavanaugh. I'm so grateful that Bloomberg has provided you that opportunity, but also grateful for you as someone who I know was an excellent advocate for our city and her citizens, so thank you very much. The only other thing I wanted to add as far as reports, we have a lot of worldly things going on here in Dubuque, actually. We have an incredible symphony which performed this weekend. Santa arrived at the one that I attended at 1:00 PM on Saturday. It's quite exciting. But additionally, we have the upcoming Nutcracker Ballet, which will be the next two weekends here in Dubuque. So much to be excited to attend and to bring in holiday season, no matter if or how you celebrate. I do think it's a time for us all to remember and consider also those that need assistance in our community. There's incredible ways for us all, each one of us, to donate our time, our treasure, and consider spending or doing one activity with your family or yourself to care for those who this holiday season might not have as much as you do. Thank you so much, everyone, for your accommodating of my first Mayor Protem experience. I appreciate it very much. There being no further business, we stand adjourned.
One little piece. Ms. Mayor Protem, I'm with the City Council to go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and purchase or sale of real estate. Second.
We have a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. I almost got that right. Adrian, would you please call the roll?
If you could just, first, Mayor Protem, read the statement of who will be present.
Oh, yes. For the record, the attorney for the City of Dubuque will consult on the issues to be discussed in the closed session is City Attorney Krenna Bramall. Okay, now, Adrian, would you please call the roll?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.